Welcome to our meeting. The date is June 24, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The City Council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, I ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Deputy City Clerk Sonia Cisneros will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Connolly will be absent. Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfier.
Lanfier, present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Sonia Cisneros, the Deputy City Clerk, Laura McAlune, the City Administrator, Patrick Brown, the Assistant City Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, Carrie Fisk, the City Attorney, Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director, and Matthew Gleason, the Finance Director. Individuals who have appropriate items for City Council consideration should complete the Request for Future Agenda Items Form located at the Information Booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Councilmembers, do you wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, I have another proposal for the council. The first item on our agenda, which we'll take up shortly, is a presentation by Honeywell Energy Audit Update. And the last item on our agenda is Resolution 9A approving an amendment to the Honeywell Investment Grade Audit Agreement. Because Honeywell is presenting first off during this meeting with your consent, council, I'd like to move Resolution 9B right up after Honeywell presents. Thank you, thank you, councilmembers. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. We lead off with Agenda Item 6A, Honeywell Energy Audit Update Presentation. Mrs. McAlune?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Jordan Belloli, and I'll let Jordan introduce the rest of the team from Honeywell, but they're here to provide a presentation to you on the status of their energy audit process that they have been going through.
Thank you. Give me a second to get this pulled up. There we go. All right, good evening. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My name is Jordan Belloli. I'm your local account representative for the City of Grand Island. With me tonight, helping me with the presentation is Don Borgman. He's our Solution Development Engineer. Josh Hansel, our Central Region Energy Sales Leader, and George Saint Amant, who is our Project Manager for developing the opportunity. So I'd like to welcome Don up here to help me present. It's been about a month and a half, I believe, since we've seen you all last. Last go-around, we presented our preliminary assessment of your facilities and some recommended projects that we were interested in investigating further. So that is what we are here to discuss with you tonight. So we'll kick it off and go over the agenda very briefly here. So first, we'd like to talk about some recent cooling challenges that not only the Heartland Events Center, but also City Hall has experienced. These are high priority, time-sensitive items, so we wanted to cover these first, and then we can get into the other energy savings recommended projects. You'll notice that the bullet points here are kind of broken into two sections. The bulk of our presentation will focus on a scenario that excludes the Law Enforcement Center. If you all recall, the Law Enforcement Center was excluded from the scope of the investment grade audit. But now, tonight, we are considering bringing it back in to the scope of the project. So we do have a few slides that address the projects that we would be pulling back in should you vote to approve that resolution. But again, the bulk of our presentation is focusing on the three buildings that exclude the Law Enforcement Center. We will present some technical narratives for each of the projects that have been investigated, and then we'll review some budgetary pricing for the total scenario, look at what the anticipated savings would be, both energy savings and operational efficiency savings, and then present to you some cash flow examples, so you can understand what the potential return on investment would be for these projects. And then we'll briefly present the scenario that does include some projects at the Law Enforcement Center, and close it with a request for some feedback from you all, and discuss what the next steps would be in our development process. So jumping right into it, on June 5th, Honeywell was alerted by the VenueWorks team in the city that there were some compounding issues with the chiller systems and HVAC equipment in general at the Heartland Events Center. These issues resulted in the Events Center having no ability to provide cooling. As we all know, we're reaching the peak of the summer months, and cooling is certainly a priority at that building, especially with the Nebraska State Fair coming up. We want to make sure that we help you address those concerns as soon as possible, and make sure that that event goes off without a hitch. Just a little bit of background, the VenueWorks team brought Honeywell out, as well as Dyken and several other local contractors, who all have history at the Events Center, to diagnose the problem. It's really been an all-hands-on-deck effort to understand what's going on there and provide some immediate recommendations so that this problem can get resolved. As I mentioned, really, the key issue here that's making this a time-sensitive matter is that the city will be handing off the Events Center to the State Fair on August 7th. So that's kind of our deadline here to make sure that this is addressed. So we want to talk a little bit about the short-term recommendations and short-term decisions that need to be made, but there is also a long-term effect to those decisions. So we want to keep our eye on both of these, you know, timeframes here. First and foremost, our clear-cut recommendation for the city is to bring in a rental chiller to make sure that there is going to be cooling for the State Fair. Without a shadow of a doubt, we are recommending some sort of rental chiller be brought in. We've been working with the city and VenueWorks to help provide some quotes from different contractors. My understanding is the city will be moving forward with that decision here shortly. But there are some other alternatives that Dyken has recommended, which would include addressing some of the failing controls that are far past their useful life on chiller number one, and for chiller number two, they need to address the oil and the inlet guide veins, or they've even recommended a complete rebuild of that chiller. So there's a lot of different options here that could result in cooling for the State Fair, but the two bullet points there that address repairs to the existing equipment are not certain in their outcome. So to provide you a level of certainty, we are really recommending that you bring in that rental chiller, even if you move forward with repairs on the existing equipment. So looking at the long-term solution here, these chillers are nearing the end of useful life. The building is 20 years old, and this equipment is limping along. And these issues that have been reported are compounding. They are getting worse and worse by the day. So our long-term recommendation really for the city is to consider bringing in a new chiller for the Heartland Events Center. It certainly will be costly, but it will bring energy, operational savings, and it will bring a long lifespan to the cooling systems at the Heartland Events Center. Don, do you want to maybe elaborate on that option a little bit further, and some of the repairs that have been recommended?
So as far as, from a long-term solution standpoint, that's not something that we need to necessarily consider tonight. So we are, this is, as Jordan mentioned, this is kind of a status. We're basically halfway through our development effort, and so we're here to update the council on what we have done and what we're looking forward to moving forward. And a long-term solution that we think is a good option to at least consider moving forward is a new chiller, but that would, that's a longer-term decision, and that wouldn't come into play until next spring before that would even be online, so.
And it's also worth noting that because these issues have just popped up, any of the pricing that you're seeing tonight for the budgetary scenario does not include a new chiller. We want to make sure we make that clear upfront. That is something that we are more than happy to address as we continue to work through that solution. But with this popping up very recently, we haven't had the time to vet every alternative that's available. So more than happy to come back in a few weeks or present that to you at our final presentation. But again, this is a status update, making sure you're aware of any of the challenges that these buildings are facing. Now, getting into some of the projects that we discussed with you last time, and that we've actually gone and developed a little bit further, you saw a similar matrix of these projects last go-around. The list has grown a little bit since last we met, but you'll notice that the three buildings we're looking at here would be the City Hall Building, the Public Library, and, most importantly, the Heartland Events Center. You'll notice that quite a bit of the scope is recommended at the Events Center. So we are hoping to get through each of these projects tonight, but we understand that time is limited, so we're going to try and focus on the items that we think you are going to be the most interested in learning about. This deck has been provided to all of you, so feel free to read through it on your own time, and we're more than happy to answer questions after the fact. So we'll jump right into lighting and lighting control upgrades. For these energy reduction projects, this is a very, very common project to include. It's oftentimes a very high savings-to-cost benefit for the city, so we would certainly recommend that you consider the lighting upgrades we proposed at the Heartland Events Center. The rest of the buildings we're looking at have already taken steps to upgrade their lighting to LED fixtures, but the Heartland Events Center is not there yet. So this would be really an all-encompassing upgrade of all of the fixtures, apart from the arena lighting. That'll be a separate presentation in this slide deck. But all of the lighting at that building, and we have two different options that we've developed for the city. The recommended option is what we're calling the door kit option. Essentially, this just gives you a wider range of control and alleviates a need that currently exists where the VenueWorks staff actually has to go and turn the power on at the breakers every single day for these lights. So that would give them a little bit more flexibility and control, and alleviate them of that burden. As you can see here, we're looking at over 1,800 fixtures in that building and upwards of 90 controllers. So this is a very wide-reaching project here. As I mentioned, the energy savings for this is the highest savings-to-cost ratio of any of the recommended projects we're talking about tonight, and there's also some operational savings from this project because the fixtures and the bulbs are needing to be changed out less frequently than their counterparts that already are installed. I'll kick it over to Don for this slide.
So in our development effort, we have had really good collaboration with all the parties that have been involved, and this is just one example of a situation where up in the concourse lighting, which we've tried to highlight with the red arrows, those lights, anybody who's been to the Events Center, when those lights are on, there's light pollution that spills over into the floor itself and into the seating area. So to address that, the concourse area is actually underlit according to National Code Guidelines. So we're going to up the lighting levels a little bit, and at the same time, we're going to cut off that light from being shown down on the event floor itself. At certain periods of time, that would be a distraction to what the events are going on on the floor. So that's an example of we're taking this opportunity to not only improve the energy usage in the Events Center itself, but we're also addressing some of the design issues that will allow the Events Center to operate better.
It'll improve the experience for the fans and for the performers, at the end of the day.
So the next couple of slides here, we have on building controls themselves, and we also, using the term retrocommissioning, that means different things to different people, but essentially, the building controls, the automation controls of a building itself help to run specifically the HVAC equipment so that it operates in an efficient manner and yet keeps the occupants in a comfortable zone. So that's what we mean by building controls. And retrocommissioning, Ashby typically recommends that you go back and you, excuse me, retrocommission a building every three to five years, and so this will get everything back into the way the building is supposed to operate and upgrade the controls themselves so they'll operate in a reliable fashion. Very similar also over at the library. We have investigated that to the point where there's some control sequences that we're going to tweak, in addition to going back and retrocommissioning that building as well. And feel free to stop us. I know we've got a lot of slides to go through, but feel free to jump in at any point in time and ask if you want us to elaborate on something a little bit further. And then the last one, or the third one here, is also over at the Heartland Events Center. We are looking at two different paths. At this particular juncture, we're about 20 years into the original building automation system itself and the server that houses those, that controls, those sequence of operations. And so we are looking at two different avenues to see if we can retrocommission what's currently there, or do we actually do, need to do a little bit more invasive replacement of that system.
All right. The building envelope, we discussed this at a very high level last time, but essentially, your building envelope is all the components in your building that keep the conditioned air in and the outside air out of your building. If you have failing building envelope measures, then you are likely having water coming into the building when it rains heavy, or you're feeling drafts come through the building, and that means you are quite literally leaking energy out. All your conditioned air is going right out the door. So this project would address both City Hall and the Heartland Events Center. We're looking at things like doors, you know, getting them new sweeps, AstroGol's weather stripping, reapplying some sealant on the windows where there may be a need, sealing any kind of additional penetrations in the building to limit that infiltration, and then sealing some expansion joints and wall cracks as well. This, along with a lighting project, they're right up there at the top for the best return on investment for these projects. So this is, again, a very common recommendation for these energy savings projects. And at the end of the day, it's going to really help improve the occupant comfort, especially at this building where we've had numerous complaints about, you know, humidity or temperatures varying from different sides of the building. And like I mentioned before, it'll help reduce drafts in the building as well. As part of the building envelope category, we've also been asked to address the windows at the front of this building. Last time, we discussed that because these windows face southwest, that heat is really, really getting into the building when that sun is beating down in the middle of the summer, and not only employees of this building, but visitors have complained about excessive heat gain in this front area. I believe the city even considered adding extra air conditioning capacity on the second floor to help, you know, alleviate this. So what we are recommending for this solution is installing window film on all the windows out front. We counted 87 window openings, and the benefits of the particular film that we've recommended here is that it does reject that solar energy, but it has a low reflectivity. Oftentimes, when you have tinting or film on windows, it might have a reflective property to it, and that doesn't always give the best aesthetic feel. So we specifically selected a solution here that does not impact the aesthetics of the building, and it also helps reduce glare as well. Not only will this help with energy savings, but it should also extend the life of your interior furnishings in the building as well. And like we mentioned with the building envelope measures, this contributes to reducing the overall load on your cooling system, so that's how it helps save energy. Any other comments on this one?
This particular measure is actually, is a multifaceted approach. For the City Hall, we're also recommending a retrocommissioning project. We're going to change the sequence of operation of the HVAC. We're going to add, we're going to do some airflow balance, get some additional air out in the lobby area in addition to this. So there's a couple of factors that are going to help with the comfort issues here in the lobby.
Sure.
And this one is maybe not the most exciting, but there are areas of the building, piping, pumps, that just need to be insulated, and this is strictly for energy savings.
So this one is more exciting than I'd say mechanical insulation. So one of the requests from the city and from the VenueWorks team was to look into the feasibility of upgrading the existing arena lights. The lights in that building are original to the building, 20 years old, they're metal halide, which is old technology. It's not energy efficient. It's difficult to maintain. So at its very base level, we have looked into upgrading those arena lights to static light-only LED fixtures. That immediately will provide some energy savings, but as we understand that the goal of the city and of VenueWorks is to improve the experience at the Events Center and add some additional elements, we've also recommended considering the fan experience upgrade, which would include a full color spectrum that can be turned on, programmed however you see fit, to give you, again, that more exciting fan experience. It also comes with paparazzi sequences where lights are flashing for intros. And, you know, along with the solution, you have a certain number of scenes and, you know, programming that is included. Our partner would actually help you get that all set up, and then should there be an additional programming sequence that you'd like to see, that can also be added after the fact. And then included with this project is also some aisle lighting for the bleachers. Do you want to maybe speak to what that would all include?
So in some of our conversations, specifically with VenueWorks folks, they were concerned about some of the events not having the light levels on the seating itself at sufficient levels. And so part of this particular measure would actually designate specific lights, and those could be turned on and adjusted to help that. So that's covered in here as well.
Perfect. Got some pictures here of examples. Top left is actually the design that our partner created. This is the Events Center that they've modeled here, so you can kind of see the black icons are where some of these fixtures are being proposed to be located. We've got a picture of the recommended fixture, and then you can see here in Lincoln, Nebraska, Pinnacle Bank Arena is where one of their installs are. So last time, we did invite you to attend a live demo. That invitation is still open if anybody would like to take us up on it. Personally, I'd love to go out there and see what they've got. So if you'd like, I'd love to take a trip with you guys over to Lincoln and show you what they got. We're not going to be presenting it tonight because it'll take up too much time, but in your packet, there is also a customer testimonial video from a similar venue that, you know, does multipurpose events, similar size. I definitely recommend you go watch it, it's pretty cool. And then kind of going along with the arena lighting and fan experience upgrades, we were also asked to investigate the feasibility of upgrading the sound system at the arena. Last time, we discussed that the speakers were originally installed all the way up on the rafters of the building, and attendees of these events were complaining that they could not hear properly. So at some point in time, they did actually suspend those speakers down on wires, which helped with the volume complaints, but actually created this reverb effect where the quality of the audio was not great. Again, these speakers are aged, there is newer, better technology out there. We did host a live demo at the Heartland Events Center last month. I believe, you know, some folks from the city and from the council attended that, and I wasn't there in person, but Don told me it was a very exciting event, and everybody got out on the dance floor and had some fun. So happy to do that again if anybody would like to participate. But again, the goal for this project, not only contributing some energy savings, but we want to create an audio environment that is not only heard by every seat in the house, but experienced at the same quality and the same, you know, volume. So making sure that that sound is dispersed evenly and with great quality was the focus here. Similar to what we had mentioned for the arena lights, we do have a customer testimonial video for the sound systems. Again, I encourage you to go out there and watch it. I'll kick it over to Don for the ice rink topic. I think this is certainly the topic that we discussed the most last time. I know it's gained a lot of public interest. It was even mentioned in a local newspaper. So I'll kick it over to him, and we did actually find a picture. The rink was turned on at one point in time, even though there were rumors that it had never been turned on. So we got clarification from our folks that came out there that it only had about 40 hours of use in the 20 years. So it was turned on, but not for a very long extended period of time.
So this is obviously a kind of a unique scenario where there is an ice plant that was available for the ice rink, and it was mothballed for about 20 years now. And so one of the things that we've done in our investigation is, first of all, validate that the rink floor itself was viable, and it was incredibly, mothballed incredibly well, whether it was on purpose or not, it may be up for question, but the floor itself is in great shape. Unfortunately, the chiller itself, which is the picture we have here, this is the chiller for the ice rink only, so don't try, don't get it confused with the HVAC chiller. So in this case, we're talking about an ice rink chiller. It's been sitting there for about 20 years. It had saltwater in it, brine, and air, and that's a bad combination for heat exchangers. So, you know, we spent some time with the city folks, we talked about ammonia, we've had some of those discussions. There was some hesitations, but we worked through all of those issues with it being an ammonia chiller, ammonia being the refrigerant that's used in this particular unit. We figured out all the code requirements and got the sign-off from the Fire Department and safety folks. However, once we did our investigation, we are currently of the mindset that putting any more money into this chiller itself would not be a wise move.
And I'm going to interrupt there because Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Oh, sure.
I had a question earlier, so we'll catch up.
I guess.
You can jump in anytime, no problem.
He inadvertently pushed his button, so.
Okay, fair enough.
We'll penalize him later.
Okay, we'll keep going as quick as we can, but again, please interrupt whenever you would care to. So essentially, at this point, what we are recommending is if you want to move forward with having ice at the Heartland Events Center, we think it's not only possible, but we would, kind of the core piece of the ice-making equipment is the chiller itself, and we're recommending setting a new chiller, an air-cooled chiller, not using ammonia. There's other refrigerants out there that are much more user-friendly, and local repair shops could probably work on it very easy as well, to set it right outside. And so it'd be an air-cooled chiller, maybe free up some, a little bit of floor space, storage area inside the unit. So there's a couple of design considerations that we're in the process of working through, but that's basically the direction that we're thinking at this time. Oh, so the way that we originally kind of laid this out is there was probably four different directions we could go with the ice chiller plant. One is to refurbish everything that's there. That's not what we're recommending at the current time. The recommendation two would be maybe we can set a new chiller and reuse everything else that's there. There's some excellent support equipment that's there. For example, there's a reverse osmosis water system that cleans the water before it goes into a Zamboni that resurfaces the ice. All of that stuff is kind of premium support equipment. It's still there, it looks to be completely usable, and we would recommend refurbishing all the support equipment there and just setting a new chiller outside. So that's essentially what option number two would be. Option number three would be, did I jump on that?
No, you're still here because that was the location.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is still number two. So anybody who's familiar with some of the, with the actual location, those chillers that, excuse me, the cooling towers that sit right outside of the mechanical room would, might be a good place to set an air-cooled chiller outside, and this is one of the locations that we've identified as an option for that. We use this just to kind of talk through.
If that chil- If, if that chiller is placed outside in that location that Don is referring to, that then gives you the flexibility to either leave that existing ice chiller in place as is, or what you'll see, he'll recommend for option three here is, in addition to setting that new chiller outside, you can remove the existing ice chiller, and we can look into the salvage value of that equipment and try and get you some money back for that solution. And that will also afford the VenueWorks team an additional storage room that can be repurposed for a number of different ways. So, sorry to cut you off there.
Yeah, so, you know, just for conversation purposes, kind of where you see this white car is generally one of the areas that we were looking at, and that's, that was the only purpose for this aerial view. And then as Jordan mentioned, option number three is kind of repurposing the space where the existing ice chiller it, it currently is. And then of course, option number four, which we don't actually have a slide on, is doing, doing nothing at all, essentially, yeah. And, and so our current mindset, the, the discussion we're having with anybody who wants to, you know, get involved with that is, we're, we're recommending at this point, option number two and three, essentially, so.
So we understand that above and beyond the scope of what Honeywell would be providing for this project, there are additional items that the city is going to need to consider if you are truly interested in having an ice rink in Grand Island. It's a great feature to have, to offer to your residents and to bring in new events to the city and to VenueWorks. But there are some additional, what we call, cost of ownership items that you'll want to consider. So the, the VenueWorks team does have the hockey boards currently in the facility. Those have been located, they appear to be in good shape. We actually found out last week that the protective glass should be on-site on the Foner Park campus, so we can ignore that as an item that would need to be procured. But should you want to bring in any kind of hockey teams or hockey events, you'd also want to look into those vertical upright supports and protective netting to make sure that you have that, that system complete. Again, that very well might be located with the protective glass when that is found in storage. The big ticket item would certainly be bringing in a Zamboni. There's no Zamboni currently on-site. There's options there, you could look at propane, you could look at electric, the, the cost could range anywhere from $100,000, as high as maybe 250,000 or 300,000. Again, the consideration would be the type of Zamboni and whether or not you get it new or used. Another piece of equipment that would be strongly recommended is an ice edger, that's only about $3,000, so not a, not a huge ticket item there. But again, we, we want to make sure that we communicate to you all that Honeywell doesn't sell Zambonis. There's, there's plenty of other things that you would need to be talking about and, and taking into this total, you know, decision-making process when you're talking about an ice rink. And then I know last time, the VenueWorks team did speak about the particular events that could be brought in. That is still in discussion. We're, we're happy to present some more information to you at the next presentation, but there's a lot of exciting opportunities that the VenueWorks team is, is looking at here. So happy to support this project if this is something the city wants to invest in further. All right, go ahead, Don.
Other things that we've been taking a look at is roof repairs. So we are looking at the, I heard roof repair at the Heartland Event Center, and also.
It's for.
Okay. Oh, that's right. So at, at, at this point, we're, we're looking at a, a series of options. Essentially, what the difference is, is whether we, we can, we'd like to procure a 15-year or a 10-year warranty. And so we're trying to evaluate all those options for you guys as well and present more information in the next go-round.
So certainly, this is a, a capital improvement project. The roof is, is aging, it has some damage. We've, we've seen videos of, of water leaking through on heavy rain days, but above and beyond that, it does contribute some energy savings. The, the white coating on the roof will reflect heat in the summer, even though that'll be slightly offset in the winter months, there is a, a net benefit and some energy savings to this project as well. Don was starting to get to it, but this project is also recommended at the law enforcement center, so we'll speak to it in a few slides. Water conservation. This is a project that can contribute some energy savings and some water savings to the, the overall cash flow of the project, but at its core, this was a request from the VenueWorks team that will certainly help them with the operational efficiency of the building. Knowing that this, this event center is used sometimes on the weekends and then doesn't have people in it throughout the week, they, you know, sometimes find that toilets aren't flushed and sinks are running. So this is something that would bring a little more autonomy to the locker rooms and the bathrooms at this facility, and when you don't have people using, you know, manual handles on, on flushers or on, on sinks, there's less wear and tear on that equipment as well. So over time, there's some operational savings. Go ahead, Tom.
So another project that we're looking at is the, the boilers at the Heartland Event Center. As, as some probably know, there is currently five boilers over at the Heartland Event Center, two of which are functional today, and pretty much made it through the winter on, on those two boilers. So we're looking at, and, and those are two of the newer ones. There's three of them that are original to the building itself. And so we're looking at possibly being able to refurbish or, or for sure, or, or replace one or three of those, of those boilers. And so we've, we've, we've gone pretty deep in our investigation so far, everything from the controls, the flu situation, and we're working through those options and, and putting some numbers together to make that determination.
You can take the next two.
Next one? Refurbishing the air handling units here in this building. So there's, there's three air handling units that serve this building, and we, there's, there's been some current events that have prompted some repairs, and, but we think as far as the air handling units themselves, I think that a refurbishment of the existing air handling units make a lot of sense. So we've evaluated, we've gone through, we've identified the components that need to be replaced, and our recommendation is to refurbish the existing air handling units. Humidifier replacements. Also, there happens to be three humidifiers that serve this building. There, it's a small, electric, steam-generated humidifier that, that maintains a certain humidity level in this building, which will aid, which will add to the occupancy comfort. They have been disbanded for as long as anybody knows, and so we've incorporated that into this project as well.
As I'm assuming most, most folks know, there was a vehicle that crashed into the Heartland Event Center a few months ago, left a fairly sizable hole right by the, the Baltimore Conference Center. That has been boarded up for the time being, as the city, you know, decides whether or not to move forward with just repairs in kind or actually upgrading this area of the building. One project that we've been asked to investigate and collaborate with Chief Construction on is actually creating a new vestibule in this area. So with the new vestibule, there will be double doors, which certainly helps improve the building envelope. You have less of that unconditioned air coming in as folks are leaving or entering the building. But along with those savings comes an energy penalty, because this is an added floor plan to the building. You've got electrical load from lights there, you've got HVAC equipment that's going to be added for heating and cooling as well. So essentially, this is kind of a wash in energy use. This is really more of an operational benefit and an experiential benefit for the event center. We got pictures of the damage in case anybody hadn't seen it yet, and there are some renderings of what that new vestibule would look like. We're continuing to work through this project with Chief Construction and working out some of the finer details, but this is kind of where we're at today. Now, this might be a good stoppage point if there were any technical questions before we get into the financial aspect of the presentation.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a technical question. You've thrown a lot at us, but I have a couple of questions on lifespans.
Sure.
So you mentioned early on about the, the air-conditioned chiller that you might do rental for.
Yes.
That, that chiller.
Yes.
The one that is going bye-bye is 20 years old, right? Because it's original.
Correct, right, Don.
What is a, what is a good lifespan for that?
For a new chiller or for the one that you've got?
Either. Like what would have, what would we have expected to get out of that?
So this, this might get a little bit technical, but Ash Ray says that the average lifespan of a centrifugal chiller, which is very specific kind of chiller, used in an HVAC application, which is exactly what is at Heartland Event Center, is 23 years. And that assumes.
Perfect maintenance.
Good maintenance. There, there is some indication that, well, leave it at that. How about that?
Okay. All right. And how long are you looking to rent for?
So the, the immediate concern here is making sure you get through the peak hot months. So we've recommended a minimum rental of two months, and quite frankly, most of the vendors do require a minimum rental period to be able to hold that price. There's some venue, some, some of the vendors were allowing you to rent for weeks at a time, but most of them are requiring a two-month minimum. We've also looked into pricing for three months, but three months should be enough to get you through the season and allow you to evaluate the existing equipment, try and get Dyken in there to maybe make some repairs, see if they can get the existing stuff up and running, or make the decision on bringing in a new chiller for next summer.
Okay. And then a couple more lifespan questions. Those are arena lights. What's the lifespan on, on that package? The ones that make it look cool?
Do we have a warranty that they offered on those?
That's a great question. We might, we might have to follow up on the, on the warranty life, but the existing lights are absolutely, at the end of their useful life, there are, there are multiple that are completely out of commission. So without a doubt, the, the existing lights are at that 20-year.
Gotcha.
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
So when you talk about a system like that, and it's based on runtime, so think about it like a, like a LED T, you know, LED TV, right? So it's rated for a certain number of hours, so it depends on how often the system is running. It's not necessarily like a, a chiller that can corrode per se. So you'll have a turnkey warranty, you know, with that system, but then it's going to be based on runtime, so the more events you have, the more often you're going to have to replace those, those fixtures or those lighting components.
Okay. All right. One more lifespan question.
Sure.
The chiller, you said that ours was not used more than one time probably.
Ice chiller.
For the ice rink. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ice rink chiller. If we did these replacements on, on that piece, what is the lifespan on something like that?
Different application, but somewhere.
Slightly different. You'll, you'll have to come to this podium, sir.
Slightly different category, but Ash Ray says that's a 20-year lifespan.
Okay. If we use it more than once?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And it's because it's, it's a, it's a different kind and it sits outside.
Okay. All right. All right. That might have been jumping the gun on some of the other things you're going to talk about, but.
No, that was perfect.
That's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, do you guys set us up with any kind of preventive maintenance system after this is all installed or whatever, so that we can keep it up and keep it and make it last?
Absolutely. Yeah, so part, part of the.
Years.
Part of the building controls and retrocommissioning project, we have included a, a recommendation to look at Honeywell's forge system, which not only brings visibility to all of your utility spend, energy usage across these buildings, but has programs in there for predictive maintenance alarms. So that will help the, the team on the ground respond more effectively and efficiently to any issues that may arise. And Honeywell has a team of, of service providers as well, so we can also look into a long-term service agreement with you. I know that one of the, the big items that the VenueWorks team wants to address is taking all of these multiple contractors for multiple different things and trying to consolidate that with one firm, so we can try and help you with that as well.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, I'm kind of a little bit familiar with boilers, but seem like they had to be inspected every one to three years or something. Those, were those boilers ever inspected over there?
They, they were inspected. There is inspection stickers on the boilers specifically. Some of them look pretty old, but there's a date on them. I don't remember the date off the top of my head.
Hey, what's the requirement? Is it one with three years or one year?
That's a, yeah. It's a, that's a local requirement, and I, I don't know exactly what it is off the top of my head, but, yeah, they have been inspected.
So they were all out of requirement?
For, for sure, the ones that were inoperative have not been inspected recently, but they're, they weren't operative, so I, I don't know that anything's.
Did you notice any preventive maintenance done on any of that equipment?
There, there was definitely some preventive maintenance done at one point in time. It, it's a little bit hard to glean some of that history, just based on what we saw so far, and the fact that the city's owned the building, you know, since the beginning of the year. So some of that is lost. We had some good conversations with, with the folks who, who owned the building before, and they were, they were very helpful in getting us some documentation, filling in some of those, some of those gaps, but, yeah, so we're, we're piecing it together best we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson?
Got a couple of questions, but I'm going to go back to the chiller, temporary chiller that you're talking about. How easy and how quickly can that be set up to be effective in, in the event center?
We were told after a decision was made, it'd be a matter of about 10 to 15 days before it would be up and operational. Again, a lot of that depends on availability. These rental chillers are highly sought after, they're in high demand. There, there was, one of the vendors that we were talking to yesterday actually has one in Omaha that they said they could get here within 24 hours. So it, it all depends on which vendor selected and what the availability is at the time of that decision being made. But the, the realistic timeframe they gave us was about 10 to 15 days would be, you know, a good window. You don't want to make this decision two days before you hand it off to the state fair.
And, and council member, we, because of the timing and because of our obligation to turn over a functioning building to the state fair on August 7th, we have started the emergency procurement process because this was a catastrophic failure of the chiller system. VenueWorks and the state fair met yesterday because we had to make sure that where that temporary chiller is set, it'll be on an exterior trailer, doesn't interfere with the setup of the state fair. So Mr. Tarwater met with Jamie Parr and her team yesterday, and they came up with a site.
Good.
So we are proceeding with that emergency procurement.
Probably worth clarifying, Honeywell's working in an advisory capacity on the rental chiller option. We're not offering a contract for that. The city or VenueWorks will procure that directly with the folks that we've recommended you reach out to. So it's really just us helping out and consult on this, on this.
Obviously, the, the right thing to do, and, you know, when you take ownership of something, that's when things start failing. That's kind of, you know, I'm a realtor, so I know. As soon as you buy your house, everything starts failing. You need a new furnace, you need whatever.
Great point.
Why not the event center? Okay. My other one, this may tie into some of your budgetary stuff, but I'm going to ask, it's more of a strategic question.
Sure.
And I'll need you two to kind of tell me, some of your answers might be in the budget part. But we're talking about the ice rink, which I'm a proponent of. I think it would be a great thing, but maybe not everybody would be. My strategic question on that is, with the current ammonia system that we have, how easy would it be to get that up and running and use it until we know for sure whether the ice rink's going to be a success before we go investing in another form of cooling and freezing that we find out that we've just invested all this money, whether it's hundreds of thousands or millions or whatever, the ice rink's really not that big a deal. We thought it was, but it wasn't. Using what we have, what do you see as far as strategic thought process on that?
That's a, that's a great question. We think that we can still retrofit the existing chiller and get that up and running for a price tag that would be lower than setting a new chiller outside.
But it is comparable. It is darn near close.
At, at the, at the moment, as best we can determine, a new chiller's going to cost about 10.3% more than doing the repairs. And, and part of it is because the repairs have to be pretty invasive. We're talking about the primary heat exchange, uh, uh, heat exchangers of that chiller need to be replaced. And then you're talking about matching up the pumping system and the compressors that haven't worked. Those are, those are great compressors. They're fantastic, very expensive, but they haven't run in 20 years. And so the labor to, to rebuild each of those compressors, it's almost, it's very comparable to setting a new chiller. We've talked about that. I love the way you're thinking, because we talked about that. What happens if this doesn't work out long-term? Is it, is it wiser to spend a little bit of money today, even if it doesn't give you the longevity that you might think about when you get a, you've got an ice rink up and running, and, but you'd have a, a shorter mentality? So we, we've worked through that, and, and that's where we are today. We're, we're not done with our development, but as it stands right now, we're about 10.3% difference in costs.
I guess it depends on what that 10.3% represents.
Yes, and, and we're, we're, we're racing to that, we're just, we're just, we don't have that finalized yet. That's, that's kind of our, our next one.
I think my comment would be, it is not a small chunk of change to get the existing system up and running. It's, it's not like you're throwing a couple thousand dollars at it. It's, it's a substantial cost, so I would recommend that the city really mull over It's, it's a substantial cost, so I would recommend that the city really mull over this decision before taking the action to either repair the existing or bring in a new one. Either way, it's a substantial cost, so I want to make sure that the city is on board and, and sees the merit in the ice rink if that is something you're going to move forward with. I wouldn't take a half measure.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate that. And again, based on your last time you were here, I still appreciate the recommendations to refurbish rather than replace a lot of things. I mean, it's very easy to come and say, just take it out, put in a new one, but I really am glad that you're looking at things saying, you know, honestly, we think we can just make this thing work. And that means a lot to me, so I appreciate that. Ice rink, we'll, we'll look at that. It's nice to know that you've got it dialed down to almost 10%. I don't know if that represents 300,000 or 3 million, but we'll find out, and then we can make a good decision.
Yep.
Thanks.
Perfect. Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is on the sound. I was at the sound testing, and do we think, is there any way to quantify how much of an improvement that would be? I mean, because is it going to be a 10% improvement or a 20% improvement? I know that when I was listening to it, the sound was very good, but then again, you know, I'm, I'm 70 years old and my hearing is not nearly as good as somebody else's, so I didn't, I don't know that I can tell if it was a 2% improvement or 20% improvement in the quality of the sound for the experience. Do we have any idea what that would, the increased experience would be there?
Well, if, if you remember the, the demonstration, our, our, our sound partner says that you can reduce everything in sound down to numbers. So we could turn around and change that into a percent benefit. I didn't come today with that number in mind, just because I don't know that most people think in that terms, but I like it. I, I like it that way, but it, it's dramatic. It's, it's, frankly, it's just, it's dramatic. The, the one component that I would have liked to have had at the demonstration was the existing sound system operational, and the gentleman who normally runs that happened to be out of town that particular day. But if it brings any comfort, he's been involved, we've chatted with him multiple times, he's been sent some of the plans, some of the ideas, some of the design parameters as well, and I think he's, I'll let him comment on it, but, but I think he is excited about the opportunity to have something that's upgraded. But I can come back and try to give you a percent better, if that's helpful, so we can do that.
I think what could be helpful is, is this firm went through and they actually, I don't know if you saw kind of the heat map they created in that slide, but they modeled the existing system in the Heartland Event Center, and they modeled what the new system would look like. So we could provide those diagrams, you can kind of see the difference in where that sound is reaching. I don't know if those diagrams really speak to the quality in each of those seats, but again, they're trying to make sure that every seat has an equal opportunity to hear what's going on. So that might be able to help you visualize maybe how much of an improvement it is as far as the dispersment of that sound. So we're happy to provide the rest of those.
During the test, I stood in different areas in the arena.
Oh, good.
I stood over here and I stood over there, you know? And so I did try to get that experience. The problem is, I'm, I'm not an expert at it, so I was like, it did sound a lot better, significantly better for me, but.
Good.
I just wanted to ask, the other thing I've had on the ice, several of us on this board here have been, were on the Heartland Event Center board over the last 20-some years, so we have some experience in, in listening to the conversations. When you get into your financials, are you talking any of the revenue stuff related to the ice or, because, you know, what I see is the ice, is you mentioned hockey, and hockey was one of the conversations 20 years ago, you know, whether we do it or don't do it, and, and so that was a conversation at that point. The other one was recreational ice skating. And then the third one was, could you bring in an event like Disney on Ice or some, some youth event, something like that? Are any of the revenue numbers related to those options included in your financials or just the expense?
So we, we are primarily focused on the cost to implement. Oh, sorry. We are, we're primarily focused on the cost to implement, and then the energy and operational savings that can come from any one of these projects. We're certainly not the expert on how much revenue Disney on Ice could bring in, but we have been working with the VenueWorks team to try and pull some of those numbers because they have similar arenas across the country that have experience. So we did not have that fully ready for this presentation tonight, but we're working collaboratively with them to kind of paint that total cost of ownership picture and the, the total benefit.
Yeah, because I think that would help us.
Absolutely.
When we start looking at, do you want to do this?
Absolutely.
The question is, you know, what's, what's it going to benefit the community and what's it going to cost the community, so?
Yep. So for the, for the interim, we've been focused so much on the solution itself and making sure we've got all those options worked out, and now it's turning more towards the strategic aspect of this. So, yeah, more, more information to come, without a doubt.
And council member, when we bring it to you for a decision point, we will have VenueWorks present their estimates on what the revenue could be if ice were included.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neil?
I apologize if I missed or misunderstood this earlier, but as far as the two main chillers that cool the whole entire building, it sounded like the lead time is rather significant to get one in, and the installation time is quite lengthy as well, correct? Or what, what did you think the minimal time was for that part?
We could be talking about 30 weeks just to order a chiller.
Wow, okay.
So we'd have to do all of the due diligence upfront, all the planning, all the design work, so we knew just exactly the right piece of equipment to get, and then 30 weeks, and then the installation. So next spring.
Pretty lengthy, okay. I just want to confirm that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So the rentals should get you through this season, but there still needs to be a, a fairly expeditious decision made on whether or not a new chiller is something that.
And as far as even repairing the existing units, it sounded like that's kind of a gamble to have and done at that deadline as well.
And, and, and what we've been told from the folks who have been on site with Dyken is, you know, nothing's guaranteed with the quotes they've provided for those repairs. They could get in there and find a myriad of other problems, so that could very well be a number that expedition.
I assume the rentals, you have to have lined up well in advance as well, too, so.
All right.
I, I assume the rentals, you have to have lined up well in advance to even get those.
Yeah, again, to the, the comment I made earlier about just availability. That's, that's a big concern.
Gotcha.
So sooner the decision made, certainly the better. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that the screen, one of the bullet points on your screen is anticipated savings, so I may be jumping the gun, but, you know, you mentioned you were focused on energy and operational savings, and it's just the nature of the way this conversation has gone. We've talked about an ice chiller and a Zamboni and an ice etching machine. You did mention one particular item in reference to savings. You said the lights at the Heartland Event Center, the lights would have a high savings to cost. Have, are there other things that you're here to discuss tonight, since I'm particularly interested in energy and operational savings, that you would characterize as having a high savings to cost, like you did lights?
We have a slide just for that question. If, if you don't mind, I'll skip ahead a bit. Is that all right?
You're free to do what you want. It's your presentation.
Go ahead, Don.
And, and before you start on that, council, I just want you to keep in mind, when we were in the process of, of finalizing the end of the Foner Park ownership and the city's final payment, the figure that we were given from Foner Park through the populist study was to anticipate in 2019, $16.5 million in deferred maintenance costs for the event center alone. So I just, as they go into this process, I want you to be able to have that same number in mind that staff had when, when we met with Honeywell last week.
So this particular slide, what we're trying to convey from a high level is, on the far right, you see a series of the measures that we've entitled, some of them being the building envelope that we discussed, the mechanical insulation, lighting is of course on there, boiler repairs, the building control system, window film. Those are in a green category because they turn around and they help the most from an energy-saving standpoint, from an operational standpoint. And we're going to, later in, in our process, we break these down line item by line item, cost and savings. So we're, we're trying to get there as quick as we can and just trying to provide a status update in the meantime. Some of the areas that are less impactful, the arena lights, those arena lights are going to save a lot of money. However, the burn hours are way different than a typical indoor lighting. So modeled in a typical year, they're going to save you energy. Whenever they're on, if the old system would have been on, you're saving money, and we're going to quantify that for you as well, along with the boiler replacements and the water conservation, and even a new centrifugal chiller. All of those things are going to save money. Some of those have a larger price tag to it, some of it are, you know, have a larger savings to them. Then some of the ones that are just kind of a, a wash, the, the roof repairs, refurbishing the air handling units, that's going to have some minimal impact, but that's, that's more focused on the reliability and the comfort for this particular building. The sound system, even the sound system, is bringing energy savings to the table. Whenever it's on compared to the old system, it's much better, but, and we're going to quantify that, but it's going to save a, a few dollars at the same time. So the longer the old system was running, if we modeled the same, there's energy savings with that. Once we start getting into the light red, and particularly the dark red, which is running a chiller that's, that hasn't been run for 20 years, we're saying that that's a huge energy penalty. There's nothing about the ice chiller that's going to save energy. And we're going to, we are quantifying what that penalty will be as well, and we're going to be doing this line item by line item. But, but this, this is, this is kind of, kind of answering the question in a general standpoint.
Absolutely. And again, the purpose of this slide and the reason why it's at the end of the, end of the presentation is, the financials is certainly one aspect, but there's a lot of other benefits that these projects might bring, whether it be better PR for the city, better comfort for your employees and your, and your visitors. So just keep that in mind, you know, the, the financial aspect is one of these things to consider, but you might have priorities that differ from what we might view as your priorities. So keep that all in mind as you're making these decisions. And again, we are, we are looking for some feedback on some of these projects fairly soon, so then we can go develop them to the full extent and provide you with contracts.
I'm going to interrupt briefly. Mr. Pollock has a question.
How long is it going to take to put in a, a chiller, a rented chiller?
The rental?
Yeah.
I, I think the comment we made earlier was, within about 10 to 15 days of order, they could have it onsite, installed, up and running. So.
In, say, two weeks?
Yeah, about two weeks.
Because we've got a state fair coming up, and we don't want that to have a major problem out there. How long is it going to take you to get your information all together?
Or all of?
Your cost, yeah.
For all of this?
Yeah.
So what I, what I would say, and we're going to talk timeline with the, the city team tomorrow, what I would say is, let's say by the end of this week, if you gave us a list of all these projects and said, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, as far as what's going and what's being put on hold, we will be back here in two months with our final presentation, contracts, and a lengthy report that is even more detailed than, than what we're showing here tonight.
I, I don't know if tonight we can take action and give you a yes, no, yes.
That's not what we're asking for.
Okay.
I, I would suggest, though, that within a couple of months, we have like a special meeting.
Right.
That starts at 6 o'clock, because this is going to run a while.
Sure. So, so just to my point, that was an example. If, if we did have immediate feedback, then we can get this all developed within two months. If you want to get us feedback on a few of these projects and we go develop those first, some of these can also be held off. You know, there's nothing to say that you have to make a decision to move forward with everything or nothing all at once. We can move as fast as you'd like us to move.
Anything else, Mr. Pollock?
No, I think that's, that'll do it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Up to the financials. So what we're going to be showing here on the next screen is a little bit hard to digest. There's really no great way to present this cash flow model on a PowerPoint, so bear with us, I'll try and walk you through it. Essentially, what you're going to see on the left side of your screen is the, the total cost, the project costs. The middle columns here are what's contributing to the project funding. And then again, the goal here is for this project to be holistically budget-neutral for the city. For all of these projects that we've presented so far, for the city hall building, library, and the Heartland Event Center, the total price tag, again, budgetary that we're looking at, is at about $8.7 million. Certainly less than that populist study that came in years ago. So this cash flow model that you're looking at here assumes no money down, it assumes bringing on a tax-exempt lease as the funding mechanism for these projects. Plenty of other alternatives we can explore with you and your municipal advisor, but this is just how it's been modeled for discussion purposes today. So you'll see, you know, with that interest over a 20-year term, that, that total financing cost could be in the ballpark of $13.6 million. And you're seeing your financing costs broke out in that first column, that would be the, the check that's made out to your lender. Technical services in that second column refer to the measurement and verification process that Honeywell does after the implementation of these projects. We'll speak to that a little bit more later in the presentation, but essentially, that is what would help you get the energy guarantee. We have to come back after these projects are implemented, perform some analysis to make sure everything's continuing to operate, and we would be providing reports year after year after year, until you decide you're happy with the guarantee and you want to cancel those technical services. So that's been modeled as three years, but that can be adjusted any way you'd like. Then you'll see in the middle here, we've got energy savings, operational savings, capital cost avoidance. The energy savings are very cut and dry. That's a calculated, you know, number that, that Don has provided for us. Those are guaranteed as part of energy savings performance contract, and we have to guarantee the energy savings. If you get less than $117,000 in savings from your utility bills in year one, Honeywell cuts the city a check, plain and simple. You'll see those energy savings do escalate over, over the 20-year term. The assumption is that your utility rates will increase year over year, so that's been modeled with an arbitrary 3%. We could model it differently if you'd like to see a, a different escalation factor. The operational savings are somewhat minimal here, but again, that, that is assumed to escalate year over year, as you've got labor rates that escalate. Capital cost avoidance is addressed differently, project by project. We could get into the specifics there, but essentially, we've assumed a total capital cost avoidance number over that entire term, and then just kind of broken it out year by year evenly. And then there is a column here for the annual capital allocation for the Heartland Event Center.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Sure.
Looking at all your numbers, and you're starting with year one through year 20, somewhere along the way, we know that, that all of the things that you put into place for thresholds and all this stuff are going to start to wear out again in that period.
Great point.
What, what type of replacement do you have in, in the big picture to make sure those are continuously being updated as often as they should, or is this just based on one replacement and hoping you're getting 20 years?
Yeah, this is based on one replacement. The, the reason we modeled it as 20, up 20 years is because most of these projects have that lifespan, so you'd, you'd be getting the benefit throughout the entire term. The state of Nebraska actually allows these projects to be financed over a term of 30 years, but then you're getting to a point where things are starting to fail and you're still paying for them. So we weren't going to lead with that, but again, this, this could be modeled any way you'd like. We could bring it down to 15, 10, you know?
No, and that's not what's bothering me.
Yeah.
It's not bothering me at all. What's, in your position, how do you make sure that you're returning those savings? Because that's the guarantee. By making sure those thresholds are still in good functioning order at year seven, or eight, or 10, or 12, or whatever?
That is exactly what the measurement and verification process entails. There's, it's called IPMVP. It's an international standard that governs how measurement verification is conducted. We have engineers that actually specialize in this. We have engineers that actually specialize in this, it's their full-time job, so they go from site to site. They inspect every single project that has been implemented, and there's a standard for how they're supposed to do that. It will be dictated in excruciating detail in the contract for how each project is verified each year, how they provide that assurance. So more detail to come on that, there's actually a slide in here that recommends we all gather for an M&amp;V workshop sometime soon, so we can explain to you the different options there. Because you can, you can take a lower-cost M&amp;V approach that gives you good certainty, but not great certainty, or you can pay a little bit more and get more frequent data collection and more granular data. So there's, there's a myriad of different ways you can address it, but there is a, a standard that governs this across the industry.
Right. Thanks.
So as mentioned in this column here, HEC Annual Capital Allocation. In talking with the city, we understand that there was, you know, a, a debt position that fell off at the end of 2024 to the tune of about $500,000 that is, you know, effectively available in the budget that could be pushed towards funding these projects. So that, that indicates an amount of capital that we understand the city could be able to contribute to funding these projects. So if that, if that capital is included, then these become essentially a, a cash flow neutral project with the energy, operational, capital cost avoidance all contributing to that funding as well. On the next slide, we have the exact same cash flow, just modeled with an assumed 30% down payment, just as, again, an arbitrary placeholder for you to understand, if, if there is a down payment made, it's, saves you quite a bit on interest, brings that capital allocation down to only about $300,000. So at the end of the day, this, this cash flow is yours just as much as, as it is ours, we can model this however you would like, and we'll be working with the city's municipal advisor to make sure this is a, an accurate representation of, of the financial picture for the city. But again, here we are today, this is a budgetary presentation, so we're just trying to give you a snapshot of, of what you could expect, should you decide to move forward with all the projects we've discussed.
There are no further questions.
Okay. We'll try and expedite the, the tail end of this presentation here. Like I had mentioned, there's some additional slides in here for projects that are considered at the Law Enforcement Center, should the city council decide to pull that back into the scope of our investment grade audit. The projects we're looking at at the Law Enforcement Center include the building controls and retrocommissioning, similar strategy that we would be employing at all the other buildings, no need to get in any excruciating detail there. Also, we'd be looking at the building envelope at the Law Enforcement Center, traditional building envelope measures, just like what are being looked at at Heartland Event Center and the City Hall. But there is also a discussion of looking into building envelope in a more invasive fashion. We had a lengthy discussion with city leadership last week, there are some real problems at the Law Enforcement Center. Don, Don could get into detail if we'd like, but essentially what we would need to do to investigate that further is actually open up some walls and figure out what's behind the walls. So that could get very invasive if you would like us to go that path. Roof repairs are also being considered at the Law Enforcement Center, same options that we're offering at the Heartland Event Center. You've got a 10-year warranty with a 15-year lifespan, 15-year warranty with a 20-year lifespan. And then the rooftop units was another topic, we might want to get into that one actually. So there's three rooftop units at the Law Enforcement Center that provide cooling to the facility. The city had already identified a need to replace RTU 1 very soon. This, this unit continues to fail and it actually serves the 24/7 operations side of the building, so we want to make sure that that's addressed. We have solicited quotes and provided some pricing for replacing all three of these units, but the recommendation for rooftop unit one would be actually upsizing that from a 60-ton capacity, or from a 50-ton capacity unit to a 60-ton. That will help with some of the comfort and cooling challenges at the Law Enforcement Center. We're also going to be bringing in some structural engineering folks to take a look at the structural integrity of the building, make sure it can support that, that larger unit. There are energy savings, operational savings, and capital, capital cost avoidance from this project, so certainly worth considering. But going down here, to speak to the, the price tag for this scenario that does include the Law Enforcement Center.
Before you get to the price tag.
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you describe the problems you need to investigate with the walls?
So the, the, the Law Enforcement Center has been experiencing some, some unique challenges in the building envelope. The brick itself is, is separating and coming off. There's been a host of folks, contractors, that have been over there and looked at it and tried to create some solutions. There's been a couple of repairs done that have fallen short of solving the problem. There is currently water coming into that building from the roof, from the walls, from the windows, and from under the floor. And so there's, there's, there's a, a lengthy discussion and a thick file that we were given on all of the solutions and, and impacts and pictures over time. And we think that we can resolve it, however, we've got to do some investigation to come up with a solution first.
And you believe that, given the nature of the water problem, that's why you have to do an invasive investigation?
Our, our, our next step would be to, to open up the walls from the inside and put cameras down into the walls to see if we can determine what the actual problem is.
And you described the problems at the Law Enforcement Center as real problems. I assume that is an indication of the difficulty or severity of the problem.
Correct, yes. We, there's, there's some evidence, obviously, I don't personally have the history there, but even while we were there, there's, there's, the, the brick is breaking and laying on the, next, next to the walls themselves. It's, it's, it's a problem. And there's, there's a long history there, and I guess we can get into that as well, but we were given that by, was it?
Matt Johnson.
Matt Johnson, who was, was, was kind enough to walk us multiple times. We've had a couple of different approaches that we've investigated, and we haven't been able to resolve it yet, so our next step is to actually open up a wall or to get a representative understanding from behind the walls.
And Mr. Sheard has a question.
On a building like this, do we know, this isn't 20 years old, is this common?
I've, I've never seen this before.
All right, is this under warranty still? I don't, I don't know how old the building is, is there any, like, manufacturers on this? This just seems like, this shouldn't happen.
I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in full agreement with the, with the concern, and I don't have an answer for that.
Do we know?
So what I have been told is that this has been an issue that the city has been dealing with, with the original contractor for a number of years, but really no fix has been found. So maybe that's because they had, they didn't do that invasive testing that Honeywell is recommending at this point. But the fact of the matter is, the building's approximately 15 years old, I believe, so warranties are not.
Were they when we first had the problem?
I couldn't tell you the answer to that. I know that it has been an ongoing problem year after year after year, and there have been multiple attempts to mitigate it and deal with it. And there's been multiple repairs, but none of them have solved the significant problems.
Anything else, Mr. Pollak?
I know, Jack, to answer your question, I know it's been going on for more than 11 years, because they, they were having problems when I was still working with the city out there. So it's, it's been going on a long time. And my next question to the mayor and administrator, are we on the hook for all of us, or is this a 50/50 split with the county?
We, as I understand it, and Mrs. McElhoun can correct me if I'm wrong, which I may very well be, but as I understand, as I understand it, the, the city is responsible for the operation and maintenance expense of the building. Is that correct, Mrs. McElhoun?
That is mainly correct. We do share a percentage of the operating expenses, utilities, things like that, the county shares and contributes to that capital. And maintenance of the capital facility is 100% on the city, but we are also the sole owner of the facility.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
I just want to comment on this a little bit too, but I believe the building's 18 years old, and I, I just know that because I happened to be around it a lot back at the time when it was being built as well. But, and, and as far as the issue, it sounds like it went under for a while, I know warranties wouldn't last this long, but if there's been a, a history of unresolved warranties, you know, not to satisfaction, there's still maybe be some precedent to possibly look into that, but that's another issue, but.
We will look at all avenues.
Thank you.
So considering the fact that the Law Enforcement Center had not been included in the investment grade audit up until this point, I just wanted to make, make it very clear, this, this work was kind of done at risk, this is a high-level analysis of these projects at the Law Enforcement Center, so we do not have guaranteed energy savings numbers for this yet or operational numbers, so therefore we don't have a cash flow to show you for this scenario. But I can tell you that that budgetary price tag all in for all four buildings, including the Law Enforcement Center, is right at about 11.1 million. So we're at about a 2.4 million delta when you're including the Law Enforcement Center, so just trying to give you that frame of reference. Again, if, if council votes to include that facility, we will go develop these projects to the point that all these other projects have been developed, and we can provide you with cash flows pretty quickly, so.
With that, we will move to 9A because we agreed to move that up. 9B, thank you, Mr. Hossi, which is approving amendment to Honeywell Investment Grade Audit Agreement to Include Law Enforcement Center. Mrs. McElhoun, do you have anything to add to this?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd simply point out, in addition to what Honeywell has presented already on the Law Enforcement Center, the original estimate for the at-risk, the investment grade audit agreement cost was $237,000 to include the Law Enforcement Center. Based on the additional studies that Honeywell has performed, that cost would increase to $256,000. That's because of the, the use of the structural engineers to address both the apparent gaps and the water intrusion between the exterior and interior walls and openings, but also the use of structural engineers to address weight capacity for properly sized HVAC equipment that would go on the rooftop. So city staff recommend amending the investment grade audit agreement with Honeywell to add the Law Enforcement Center as a defined facility, increasing the at-risk cost of the contract from $220,106 to $256,000. And that city's ask for, at-risk payment would be due to Honeywell, should the city council not proceed with actually going forward with the capital projects. If you recall, if we go forward with the capital projects, that at-risk investment grade audit cost is wrapped into the total project expense. So staff's recommendation is to approve an amendment to the Honeywell contract to add the Law Enforcement Center as a facility and increase total contract, contract cost to $256,000.
And with that, I have a council member who wants to make a motion and a second, but sir, did you have anything to add? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we approve the amendment to the Honeywell Investment Grade Audit Agreement to include the Law Enforcement Center.
Mr. Hossi?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Council members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 7A through R? Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items 7A through R.
Mr. Brown?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We will now take up our public hearings, starting with 8A. Public hearing on Grand Island ETJ rezoning to TA Transitional Agricultural Zone to a B-2 General Business Zone, a rezoning of property at 3504 East Stolly Park Road, located north of Stolly Park Road and west of Shady Bend Road, from Transitional Agricultural Zone to a B-2 General Business Zone in, in the Grand Island Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Hall County, Nebraska. Mr. Nabody, please present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you this evening is to rezone this property as it's shown here on the corner of Shady Bend and Stolly Park Road to a B-2 General Business Zone. Shady Bend and Stolly Park are both section line roads. The comp plan that was adopted in January does call for, or does allow the city council to rezone properties at the intersection of section line roads to commercial. That does generally allow for neighborhood commercial in those mile section line areas. In this particular case, the owners of this property are proposing to use this for their electrical contracting business that does require a, the B-2 zone at a minimum, and have requested the rezoning. Because it's at the intersection of the two section line roads, the comp plan would support this change in zoning, staff did recommend approval of it. Planning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on June 4th, and they also recommended approval of it. I know the owners of the property are here, and I think they have asked to speak or maybe just to answer questions if you have any.
Public hearing is now open. I have Freddie listed, if you'd like to come up and speak, please.
Please state your name.
If you, my name's Freddie Lopez. You know, my dad's the owner of the property, and he's the owner of Yuri's Electric, and we just would like to rezone this to a B-2, just to be able to be opera, and actually, you know, we have, have the, the land for it, so when we have the two buildings for it, and we'd just like to make some offices there. And, yeah, just, any questions I'd, I'd feel free to answer.
Council may have questions later, but I appreciate you speaking to us tonight.
Is there anyone else I'd like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council members, the action item on this is ordinance number 10022. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Brown?
Move to, uh, suspend the statutory rules.
And Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
There are motion, motion on the merits of ordinance 10, comma, 022. Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number 10022.
Mr. Pollak?
Can I have a second, Ted?
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, Chad, just for clarity here, by, I'm going to say by law, because I don't know what other word to use, really, they weren't, they're not supposed to be able to do that in the current zoning.
In the current TA zoning district, the, running the construction business out of that would not be permissible. So in order to actually run that, have employees come to there, pick up equipment, park vehicles, and take company vehicles, all of those things that are involved in a contracting business with multiple employees, they would not be able to do from that site. If it were a single person running a, an electrical contracting business, they could do that, because they're living there and they could do it as a home occupation, but not with the additional people and a larger business.
Okay. And it's obviously an appropriate use of the, the land, so I, I'm in full support, just wanted to clarify that though, thank you.
Please vote.
Public hearing 8B, public hearing on Grand Island Extraterritorial Jurisdiction rezoning Transitional Agriculture to Residential Development Zone, a rezoning of property, property located north of Stolly Park Road and east of Stir Road, from Transitional Agriculture to Residential Development Zone in the Grand Island Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Hall County, Nebraska. Mr. Nabody?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This one is just down the road from the other one, lots of activity in that neighborhood this evening, it's about half a mile, little over half a mile to the west, closer to Stir Road. And the proposal here, currently, Mr. Rezak owns this roughly 12 acres, there are two lots there, there were two houses on this property, we subdivided it a number of years ago into one with his main house and one that he was going to try to market, that was about 10 acres, was not able to successfully market that, is requesting the ability to split that into four lots total, so his existing house, and then three additional lots. The three additional lots are all more than three acres. The houses would be limited to the area shown on the development plan, there is sufficient room for well and septic on these properties, and it would limit him essentially to two more houses than is currently allowed. He's got two lots, this would let him have four lots. This would let him market those as smaller pieces. The area is zone TA, it, if you go back in time 20 years ago, to 2004, Mr. Rezak owned the property then, and he would have been able to divide this out in that manner 20 years ago. would have been able to divide this out in that manner 20 years ago. That's when we split out the large lot residential zone and the TA zone, if you remember me telling stories of that. And there were really good reasons to do it, and I'm glad we did, but in this particular case, it did have a negative benefit on, or negative consequence for Mr. Rezak. So, what he's requesting this evening is a planned development. He's only going to be able to build, or the people who own this are only going to be able to build four houses total. There is one there existing. They could already do two. It's not a major change to this property. The day after the planning, Planning Commission did hold a hearing on it. Planning Commission did recommend approval, and staff is recommending approval. There are half-acre, one-acre lots across the street around the Sandy Beach Lake that Rudy Platte developed, probably in the late 80s, early 90s. So, it's consistent with the area and consistent with the size of the properties there. Planning Commission recommended approval. Staff has recommended approval. The day after the Planning Commission meeting, I got a call from somebody asking about the larger portion here, asking if they could put an RV park there. This is just around the corner from Foner Park. And actually, an RV park is something that could be placed there. With this zoning change, it takes that possibility out and really makes it residential. We did have a few people at the Planning Commission meeting that testified in opposition to this. They didn't want a lot more houses in the area. I don't know whether, I'm fairly certain that they would not want an RV park there, as opposed to two additional houses. They're not here, and I can't speak for them.
Mr. Nabody, this agenda item calls for consideration of both an ordinance and a resolution. Would you explain that?
Yes. The ordinance is for approval of the rezoning, and then the resolution approves the plat that would go along with that rezoning, the development plan, the subdivision agreement, and authorizes the mayor to sign that, to sign the plat and subdivision agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody.
Public hearing is now open. I have Dick down to speak.
Please state your name.
My name is Dick Rezak, and I'm requesting this rezoning for a couple of reasons. Number one is my age. I tried to market it in a 12-acre lot, but there's just no big demand for 12 acres as far as farming is concerned. And I just basically can't keep up with it anymore. I planted strawberries. I've planted onions from McCain's. I've planted sweet corn. I've tried a lot of different things on that lot. None very successful as far as financially. My hope is that, I planted over 1,000 trees on this lot, and it's very secluded, very private. It's definitely ideal for residential, only allowing three houses to be built in the area. I think it's an ideal location for someone who would like to have an acreage, small acreage. There's been three houses built east of me in the last five years. We are probably the longest-living people in that area as far as number of years. My brother owned the property. He suddenly passed away unexpectedly. I moved back from Omaha to kind of take care of my mom and grandma and the property. And I would like to stay living there, and kind of this zoning change would allow me to remain in that house. The Rezaks have lived on that property for over 50 years, and I would like to stay there. I've been there 38. This would allow me to sell off part of that and still stay living in that home that my brother built. I guess if there are any questions, we've gotten along real well with all the neighbors, and I think it's a good fit for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Rezak.
Is there anyone else I'd like to speak on this item?
Pardon?
If not, public hearing is now closed.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Is anybody else wanting to speak?
Mr. Hawsey, do you have a motion to suspend the statutory rules on ordinance 10023?
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number 10023.
And Mr. O'Neil.
I second to suspend the rules.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
A motion on the merits, council? Mr. Brown.
I move we approve. I move we approve 10,023.
Mr. Lanfair.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson.
I spent a little bit of time on this today, assuming we would have opposition, and I'm glad to see that we don't tonight. There are a lot of good benefits to what's being proposed here. One is you have three-acre sites. Those are good. As a realtor, I don't know how many times I've had people ask me, are there any acreages available for me? Is there any acreages? This gives you a perfect opportunity for somebody that wants to build their home on an acreage, and you've got plenty of room. I read through the Planning Commission protests there, where basically thought they're gonna reduce the property value, and they're gonna increase traffic, and they're gonna, you know, all these things. We've gotta make a reason why we're not in support of something. But I can't think of a better fit to see this land divided like this because of the amount of room there is per property. There's not gonna be any crowding of any of the existing neighbors. I think really, if we boil everything down to what bothers people, it's usually just change. We don't, we don't want the change, and it's not the way it's always been. So, I think what you propose looks very good, and I wouldn't be surprised that you have some people that are very interested in that. Interestingly enough, I think I had somebody ask me not that long ago about that particular area, but they, because they wanted to look at putting something out there. So, we may have something happening right away, you just don't know. But very appropriate, and I think it's just gonna be a good fit for that area.
Mr. O'Neil.
I just had a second on it. I didn't know if my light was still on or not, but...
To approve.
Oh, sorry. I, well, my screen is, I don't have the vote on here.
Oh, you don't? Well...
I thought we had...
There is a motion to suspend the rules.
Are you making, are you seconding, Mr.?
I, I seconded to suspend the rules earlier, but...
Yeah. So, Brown and Lanfair have the motion under ordinance.
Motion adopted.
Resolution 2025-207, approving Rezak second subdivision. Anything to add, Mr. Nabody? Thank you. Mr. Hawsey, a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution 2025-207.
Mr. Pollak.
Can I have one second, please?
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Public hearing 8C. Public hear, oh, pardon me first. I will be opening both 8C and 8D because they concern the same property. Is that correct, Mr. Nabody?
That is correct.
So, I'll read through them both. 8C, public hearing on Grand Island rezoning large lot residential zone to a medium-density residential zone, a request to rezone property located in northwest Grand Island at the corner of Capitol Avenue and Ingleman Road, the original school site for Ingleman Elementary School, from large lot residential zone to a medium-density residential zone in Grand Island, Nebraska. And continuing with 8D, public hearing on redevelopment plan amendment, CRA area number 35, north of Capitol Avenue and east of Ingleman Road, Hasselman Development, Grand Island. Mr. Nabody, please tell us about these.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And you'll notice I brought water with me this evening, because I knew I was going to talk a lot. The item before you right now, there are actually two items. One is rezoning this property. There's a request from Hasselman Development to rezone the property from large lot residential to R3 medium-density residential. The R3 medium-density residential allows one dwelling unit per 3,000 square feet of lot space. Mr. Hasselman is planning on developing 10 lots on this property if this is approved. And you would get a, it'll come off a Capitol Avenue with 10 lots with a cul-de-sac. Sewer and water would be extended throughout. The street would be 37, or 34-foot paved street, so it meets our requirement for parking on both sides. The minimum, the lots would all exceed 6,000 square feet, so he would be able to put a duplex on each of those. With that, he is asking for tax increment financing. Many of you will remember that before the school district tore down Ingleman School, they brought forward a blight study because the buildings there were certainly qualified as blighted and substandard, and brought that forward with the intent that they would market this so that somebody would hopefully build housing at that site and be able to use tax increment financing to help finance that. He is asking for $734,000 worth of tax increment financing over the course of probably 18 years. What we'll do, like we do with many of these, is it's 15 years on any given property, but it starts, when you finish, the ones, two years from now, the TIF will start on those at that point in time. He's hoping to get all of this done in the next two years, but we all know how hopes go, especially with the economic times that we've seen, and whether you can get the materials you need and all of those things to go with this. So, we've set that up over a five-year period. Hopefully, he'll be done within two. The TIF would extend then to include three, or $734,000 on those 20 units, which is a return on investment for the TIF of about $4.40 for, of invested dollar for every TIF dollar in this particular case. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning and the preliminary plat. They also recommended approval of the redevelopment plan. CRA has reviewed the redevelopment plan, has recommended approval of the redevelopment plan. If you approve this this evening, they will move forward with a contract for tax increment financing.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody.
Public hearing is now open.
Please state your name, sir.
Michael Gaiman. I live just east of this property, at lot one of Buck Subdivision, 4356 West Capitol. Speaking with Mr. Hasselman the night before the meeting started, my major concern was the drainage off of that property. According to the plat drawing, it's going down the street. Everything's tapered towards the street and then out, the old existing drain that was there for the school, which is fine. There is also some concerns about what are these rental units gonna do to our property valuations, if any? Is it gonna change it, is it not? Is it gonna affect it? I, I don't know. I've never been in this kind of situation before, and, I mean, there's some concern. I'm not speaking for all the neighbors, but there is some concern of what that's gonna do to our property values.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Dustin.
Please state your name.
Dustin Hasselman. My wife and I are the owners of this property and are looking to hopefully build these duplexes. They're three bedrooms, great location in town, and try to build them at a price point that's affordable rent for Grand Island. So, I think this would be a great opportunity for that, and I'm here to answer any questions.
And council may have some later.
Thank you.
But right now, we're going to proceed. So, the action item, the first one, is ordinance 10024. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we suspend the statutory rules for ordinances.
Mr. Pollak.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
On the merits of ordinance 10024, Mr. Nabody, do you have anything to add?
Not.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on the merits? Mr. Lanfair.
I move that we approve.
Item 1004.
100...
124.
Thank you. Mr. Stell.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Please vote.
Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments on there because there were a couple of questions asked. But first of all, I'd like to talk to Mr. Hasselman if I could. Also say that I appreciate your nice, big building down there on Webb and State.
Thank you very much.
Seems like it took a long time to get up there, but she's a beautiful brick building, and that roof goes on forever.
I appreciate it. The roofer said the same thing.
Huge roof. Three bedrooms kind of surprises me. That's, it's a good surprise, because three bedrooms are good, but about how many square feet are you anticipating these to be?
Each unit will be about 1,200 square feet, plus a one-car extra-dealth garage.
All right.
We currently own three of these now off of Stolly Park, and we'd be using the same print for those.
Okay. Very good. Three bedrooms are great. You know, people have children, and you've got, sometimes mom and dad might be with you, but, no, that's, that's a perfect size. A lot of times, I see these as little two bedrooms, which are okay, too, but the three just opens up a new market for you.
And along with them, there are two bathrooms as well.
That's great. That's really good. Well, appreciate that. So, that was my only question for you, just so people know. As far as the effect on property values, I would just say, I'm a realtor, I'm not an assessor, but I will tell you that your neighborhood is gonna be, is going to look a lot better with these brand-new duplexes there, with a new road than a dirt lot right now. It's gonna look a lot better. Is it going to have an adverse impact? It's not gonna have an adverse impact on your property value, because each property is looked at compared to each other that are similar to, you know, if you've got a ranch-style with a basement, it's gonna be compared to others that are similar to that. These aren't gonna have a basement, I'm assuming, so, I mean, it's all gonna be different. Duplexes will be looked at differently than what single-family residences are gonna be looked at, and the assessors will look at that. What it's going to do is just enhance your neighborhood that much more. This reminds me a lot of what the Mezners have done on, up at Five Points around... This reminds me a lot of what the Mezners have done on up at Five Points around Supersaver. I live in that area about two blocks away, probably a block and a half, and I was not crazy about that at first when they went up. We have 11 duplexes there now, two bedrooms. It just made that whole neighborhood look so much nicer, and I—I can't wait for them to build the other side of the street because right now, we're kind of lopsided. We've got one side with all these beautiful duplexes, another one with weeds are this tall, which I'll be reminding Chad, the weeds are this tall. We've probably got to let him know it's time to get out there and get a mow, but it's going to enhance the neighborhood a lot, and three bedrooms are just exactly what we need. So thank you for that.
Please vote. Motion adopted. Pollak was missing. Pollak, do you— His what? Oh, it didn't. He's voting yes on that one.
Mr. Pollak voted?
Yeah, he—he hit it. I think it went out, but he's voting yes on that one. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Continuing the action item on the tax increment financing request is Resolution 2025-208. Anything to add, Mr. Nabody?
No. Again, this is a request for $734,000 of tax increment financing over the course of 15 years for each of the properties. It is—it does qualify as workforce housing, so a majority of all of the expenses of this, including building the buildings, is actually eligible for tax increment financing, but it will not generate enough to cover all of that, so it would—we anticipate it will generate the $734,000 over that.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody. Motion is in order, council. Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-208.
Mr. Stell?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I look at on TIF is the amount of TIF per unit, per dwelling unit. And so there's 20 dwelling units here, so the TIF request at $734,000 is going to be $31,700 per unit. We have seen some in the 40s, and we've had seen actually some in the—in the low $50,000 per unit, but I think this is—that is reasonable and should go forward because of our need for workforce housing.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I was actually going to comment something similar. I did want to comment, and I'm not asking anybody here a question. It's just always interesting. We used to hear the question, is that going to reduce my property value? And I don't know if that's a bad thing anymore. I don't know if people are asking, is that going to raise my property value? Am I going to be assessed more? So I guess that question always—had it one meeting, and I think now we have to be thinking of it with two meetings.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Before I read 8E, I want to thank Mr. Nabody for his economy of words.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing on zoning text amendment. Consideration of changing—changes various sections of Chapter 36 of the Grand Island City Code. Sections 36-7, abbreviations and acronyms. 36-8, B, definitions. 36-25, permitted obstructions in required yards. 36-27, accessory building and uses. 36-54, primary agriculture zone. 36-55, secondary agriculture zone. 36-56, special agriculture conservation zone. 36-58, special agriculture industrial zone. 36-660, transitional agriculture zone. 36-61, large lot residential zone. 36-97, schedule of minimum off-street parking and loading requirements. And 36-99, home occupations. And to add, 36-108, livestock feeding operations to the Grand Island City Code. It's yours, Mr. Nabody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we could have just said we're going to replace Chapter 36, but we're not just replacing Chapter 36, we're amending specific areas of it. We will be bringing forward more changes in the near future, but this is where we're at today. I'm going to go through this very quickly. If you have questions, please stop me, but I want you to understand what these changes are. Some of them are really simple, like the changes to abbreviations and acronyms. We no longer have the Nebraska Department of Aeronautics. We have the Nebraska Department of Transportation. So it's changing some of those things. We updated the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. We skipped Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy and went to NDWE, Nebraska Department of Water and Environment and Energy. So we're skipping that. That's a really simple changes, just not a big deal. In the definitions, all we are changing is in Section B, the definition of a principal building. Principal building shall mean a building or buildings within which the main or primary use of the lot or premises is located. We are also taking out and which is supplied with the main electric and/or sewer utility connections because that is old language, and utility connections don't have to be on a principal building. You can put them on a post out in front of the house. You can put them on an accessory building and then feed your main building off of it. That was an old definition, and it doesn't make any sense. What this does, though, is allow for multiple buildings on a lot that are all within the same—within the setbacks of the principal building. They don't exceed the density or coverage of the exec—of that building, and they can all be on that lot. So it—it adds some flexibility to our zoning regulations. 3625, attached flagpoles. That sounds silly, but if somebody's got a flagpole that's sticking out over the front of their house, can it extend into the front yard setback? Yes, it can. We are specifying that. The next one is dealing with those principal buildings again, and it's changing it to principal buildings and accessory buildings and uses and renumbering that. Again, we're stating that principal building can be multiple detached buildings that do not exceed the density coverage and setback requirements of the zoning district, and they may be counted as a single principal building. Renumbering the rest of that chapter appropriately. In the primary ag district, all we're doing is moving the livestock regulations to Section 108 and referencing Section 108. Why did we do that? Because when we get down to the A2 zone, we had the—all of those repeated. So we're putting them in one place in the code instead of multiple places in the code and moving those. And then referencing those in the AgSC and AgSI, which are both districts that are in the Cornhusker Army ammunition plant right on the edge of our two-mile jurisdiction. So really, that's all those changes are. There is referencing those. The transitional ag zone, we require 20 acres for a minimum lot size except the one-time split and—but we had this piece of language that stayed in here from 20 years ago that we didn't notice. At a density of two dwelling units per acre, it didn't make sense with our minimum lot sizes. We're just removing that and fixing that because that was not what was intended 20 years ago, and somehow, we missed it and caught it as we were going through things at this point in time. The large lot residential zone, which is that area that used to be transitional agriculture within the city, northwest Grand Island, East Lakes, those areas, we are making one change there, or I'm proposing one change, that the minimum lot area per dwelling unit should be reduced to 9,000 square feet, the same as the R1 zoning district, if the lot is connected to city sewer and water. So as long as you're on city sewer and water, you could potentially put a duplex on one of those 20,000-square-foot lots. If you're out at the East Lakes and you're on Well and Septic, you can't put a duplex on there. You have to be connected to city sewer and water. And that makes those lots much more similar to our R1 zoning in the rest of the community. The next thing is off-street parking and loading requirements. We are—I am proposing, and I've talked to Planning Commission about this for probably the last year, that we make—that we reduce our required parking for commercial entities. For instance, Walmart, when they built 20 years ago, they built more parking than we required. Their requirement internally was one—with five spaces for every 1,000 square foot of gross square footage. Ours was five spaces for every 1,000 square foot of net square footage, which you take about 20% of the building out. We required one for four, they required one for five. So that's where they were at. They're down to three and a half now. Why are they down to three and a half? How many people shop online and stop by and pick up the—pick up your groceries? You're in the Walmart parking lot for 10 minutes, where you used to be in the Walmart parking lot for two hours. They can turn over those spaces so much faster. From the city's perspective, as a city council, for instance, why would you want to potentially reduce the required parking? What can go where that parking lot is? Real improvements, real taxable improvements. What we are not doing, and what I will not suggest for Grand Island, and that is being done all across the country, is putting in parking maximums, is saying, all you can have is this much parking. That won't work here. If they want to have more parking and they want to pay for it, they can put it in. We're not telling them they can't do that. I was talking to the mayor earlier, and can you imagine if Texas Roadhouse did not have as much parking as they do? Who gets hurt if there's not enough parking? The business gets hurt, not because people are going to go somewhere else. So what we're doing is lowering those. We're not lowering hotels. You need one space per hotel room at a hotel. That just makes sense. But a lot of the retail and office uses, I'm proposing that we reduce that and let them make a business decision on how much parking they really need. We're not changing anything with the residential parking. We did that back in November. If you remember, for one-bedroom units, we changed it to one and a half spaces per one-bedroom unit. Otherwise, we require two spaces for every dwelling unit. The next changes that are on here are—well, the other thing we're doing is we had licensed occupancy, and as we looked at licensed occupancy, there isn't a licensed occupancy. There may be a fire occupancy, there may be some of those things. Ed Klemick, or Chief Building Official, suggested that we go with design occupant load, which is something they figure with the building permit. So how many occupants are going to be in here? That's a number we're already calculating. If we're doing parking based on design occupant load, that you need two spaces for every four persons of dis—of design occupant load. That's something we're already calculating. That's an easier calculation to make. Home occupations, I'm proposing that we strike the—no more than 25% of any one-story can be used for the home occupation because I don't know how to check that. We don't go into the houses and look. If their whole basement is their—if they're selling vacuum cleaners and going door-to-door selling vacuum cleaners and they're storing vacuum cleaners in their basement and using that as warehouse space, we're not—we're not going to go in and check that. That's a rule that is really unenforceable. I would recommend we remove that. The other thing I did, we had all of the home occupation on the music students and so on last year, and one of the things the Planning Commission specifically asked me to do as we were updating these regulations is what do we do about larger lots? What do we do about occupations on larger lots? How do we accommodate that? We should give them some ability to do more. And what I proposed here is that you could go up to eight students—
Like a piano teacher?
Like a piano teacher. Could, and if they've got a large lot, could go up to eight students, but for every student over four, they need to have an additional part—hard-surfaced improved parking space. So they would have to have up to—to have eight students, they would need eight improved parking spaces—
Off-street.
On-site, off-street. So can you just do that? No, but if you've got a large lot with a long driveway, you probably already have parking spaces that would accommodate that. And then the last thing is moving those livestock regs to a separate section of the code in just one place to reference. That's a very quick run-through. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Planning Commission did workshop these and review these at their May meeting, suggested we bring them back for the June meeting and for potential approval. They held a public hearing at the June meeting and recommended approval of them.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody. Ordinance—oh, go ahead. You're fine.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Ordinance number 10025, is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
On the merits, Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move—do you want me to read it all? How about I move that we—we pass 8E.
And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing 8F, public hearing on acquisition of permanent easement for South Locust Street Improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, Project Number 2021-P-6, XANA. Mr. Kurtz, good evening.
Good evening. This is another permanent easement acquisition for the Foner Park project that we're currently working on.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
A motion, council? Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-209.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing 8G, public hearing on acquisition of permanent easements for Stur Road to Highway 30 northbound turn lanes, Project Number 2023-P-12, Swift Beef Company and JBS USA Holding, LUX SARL/JBS USA LLC. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, this is a permanent easement that we need to relocate an existing electric line that runs along Stur Road. We're needing to do this work to widen for the turn lane on that—on that intersection at Highway 30 and Stur Road.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Is there a motion, counsel? Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025-210.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9A, 2025-211, approving Here Grand Island 2025 LB-840 grant application. Mrs. McAlune, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. Here Grand Island LLC founded and operates the free summer concert series of the same name in downtown Grand Island at Amor Plaza. Since its inception in 2016, the concerts have evolved into a cornerstone of the city's cultural scene, attracting an average of 3,200 attendees weekly in 2023. Weather challenges in 2024 caused cancellations and loss of anticipated revenue, and some costs from 2024 season remain outstanding, although most vendors have committed to participating again in 2025 in order to continue this well-attended and popular event. Beginning with the 2025 series, Here Grand Island LLC will be formally supported through partnerships with Grow Grand Island, Hall County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, all of whom are assisting in boosting fundraising and financing for 2025 and forward. The 2025 LB-840 grant application is for $50,000, which is an increase of $40,000 from prior LB-840 funding assistance grants. Prior LB-840 funding for Here Grand Island has remained at $10,000 annually, despite the increased costs of talent, insurance, and operations. Therefore, the 2025 grant seeks to put Here Grand Island on solid financial footing and does include the payment of approximately $13,000 in unpaid costs from the 2024 season for security, portable restrooms, and sound and lighting. All three of those vendors are willing to continue supporting the event with the ability to bring the event's accounts current and pay those, the anticipated 2025 costs. With the assistance of its new formalized partnerships, Here Grand Island LLC has developed a budget pro forma for the next three years to support the series' cost of approximately $80,000 annually. Fundraising support has already been strong from the community. Representatives here Grand Island, of Here Grand Island LLC, Brent Linder, and Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, Mary Burley, and Brad Melama from Hall County Convention and Visitors Bureau are available for questions. And in addition, Mrs. Burley has a presentation for your consideration. Staff's recommendation is to approve the LB-840 grant at an amount of $50,000.
Thank you. Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, presenting an LB-840 application for your consideration for Here Grand Island LLC. Here Grand Island is entering its ninth incredible and very successful year under the leadership of founder Brent Linder. Because of the success and the growth of this free concert series in our downtown district, the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Grand Island Community Foundation, and Grand Island Tourism have really wrapped our arms around the event and administrative support. Greater Grand Island Community Foundation will serve as the fiscal sponsor. All funds raised go to the Grand Island Community Foundation, and all expenses come out of the Greater Grand Island Community Foundation. This is a significant partnership, one that we've never had before with, and we're so grateful for the Community Foundation for taking us on. Here Grand Island, like Ms. McAlune stated, has historically received a small $10,000 community support grant through EDC LB-840 operating dollars. This is an eligible LB-840 activity through, because it is a tourism-related activity, and in Grand Island's plan, that makes it an eligible, an eligible recipient of those funds. Now, the concert's really fun to talk about and the social-emotional connection that it has and it gives to our community, but the numbers and the economic impact are also really fun to discuss. In 2024, there were six shows in the downtown district, and you will see those shows are outlined based on dates and the attendance there of them. The direct sales are the financial transactions that happen within Amor Plaza and within Here Grand Island's footprint. The total sales are additional financial transactions that happen that evening alone within the entire rail site district. You can really see ebbs and flows. When we have significant activity in our rail site district, those sales, food and beverage occupation tax and sales tax, go up. In 2025 season, it will consist of six weeks of concerts and 19 bands that will perform. If Mother Nature interferes, like we hope she doesn't this summer, but we can't control, all rain-out dates, all inclement weather dates will be held at the Leader Crans. This will allow us to continue to have those concerts free to our community and still have a great activity on a Friday night. Each concert costs roughly $8,000 to $12,000 per evening to produce. This is an updated budget from the one you have in your council packet. The major difference is going to be the sponsorship. When we had submitted the LB-840 application, we had only raised $30,000. Today, we have raised $55,500 through private donations alone. Paid labor is also changed on this. Here Grand Island is 100% ran operated by volunteers, volunteers in our community, volunteers in our workforce, and volunteers that want to see this event and this community thrive. So again, roughly, this is the outline and the total budget of putting on a concert series for six weeks. Again, we request the approval of Here Grand Island LLC's $50,000 LB-840 application. We request that to continue the heartbeat and the soul of our rail side district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent, do you want to come up and speak?
Hi, Brent C. Linder, 1322 West John Street, if we need to do that. Of course, this is, my spectacles here, very near and dear, but I did want to submit a letter from Andrew Norman, who Brad had the pleasure of working with when he brought the Good Living Tour, which was an exciting concept of bringing bands into smaller communities, of which we were one that were chosen. So it was like four or five bands that came in. We did it over in the Prairie Pride parking lot. We were asked to do the beverage service, and we're like, "This is really a cool deal." So we got to meet Andrew Norman through that, which he had started Here Omaha and Here Lincoln. His wife and him started Here Nebraska, which its sole purpose was to promote Nebraska artists throughout the world. If you had Nebraska roots, Nebraska ties, acting, music, anything, was to promote that. So we met with Andrew several years, and we're like, "We want to do this in our community." So we started it up, love it, but Andrew penned a letter that I'd like to read. He's current executive director of The Bay. I don't know if you wear that. It's in Lincoln. It's a nonprofit, started by Mike, I can't remember his name, the professional skateboarder, where they have an indoor/outdoor skate park. They give scholarships to kids, kind of latchkey kids that can go there after school in a safe environment and skate. They run a little café out of there. They teach them usable skills in marketing, computer technology, things like that. Sorry, I cracked up. This is, I'll just read this. So, "Dear Mayor Steele and council members," this is from Andy. I'm writing...
Okay, I'm going to read this from Andrew Norman. It says, "Dear Mayor Steele and council members, I'm writing to voice my unequivocal support for Here Grand Island and its LB-840 tourism grant request. Since its founding in 2016, the series has delivered 10 consecutive Friday night concerts each summer in rail sites of Amor Plaza, welcoming roughly 3,000 people per week and more than 20,000 over the course of the season. Those audiences translate directly into diner, dinner reservations, hotel stays, and packed storefronts up and down Third Street, proving the great art and healthy downtown economics go hand in hand. Private partners have noticed. Amor Finance spurred the part, spurred by partner Grow Grand Island, invested more than $700,000 in a permanent stage in infrastructure upgrades that widen the plaza's reach and extends its utility well beyond the concert calendar. The kind of commitment doesn't happen, this kind of commitment doesn't happen without proven draw. Here Grand Island also amplifies Nebraska's talent. More than 100 local and regional acts have played the series and gives families a high-quality, substance-free gathering place that kids can grow up with and eventually perform on themselves. It's exactly the sort of grassroots, high-impact initiative LB-840 was created to catalyze. For these reasons, I urge you to fully fund Here Grand Island's application. Your approval will strengthen the project that is already delivering measurable cultural and economic returns for the community and the state. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Andrew Norman, Executive Director, The Bay."
Thank you, Mrs. Burley and Mr. Linder. Mr. Hossi.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-211.
And Mr. Pollak.
I would second that.
And discussion, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. This is awesome. It's one of the things that I know, we can't point at people in the crowd, but I know tourism uses this event in all of their marketing materials for downtown Grand Island for rail side. It is one of those marquee events. I think every time I'm there, I see Mitch and I see others. We always, you see neighbors, you see friends. It is a marquee thing about Grand Island, and one of my favorite things about it is something I think Mary said, that it's volunteer-driven, and it, it doesn't happen without great people of Grand Island, of which Mr. Linder is definitely the big dreamer of all of them, and he is much appreciated. I think this is a fantastic thing to support, and I want to thank you all for sticking around a very long meeting, very long meeting, to give us that presentation.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by, I appreciate Brent Linder for being the founder and bringing this to Grand Island, because this is a wonderful series of community events that are free, and it, we have always done things at Beekler Park or at Ashley Park, and I'm like, "This is that on steroids." This is a wonderful thing that my family has enjoyed for nine years now, and we love it. And I think it just adds to, to the whole ambiance of Grand Island and what we offer in this part of Nebraska. I only have two suggestions. The first one is try making it a smoking, vaping-free campus, because there are many problems like that. The second thing I would say is, I'm challenged with the dogs on the grass. I'm not challenged with people having dogs, but after seeing the dog on the grass and the kid on the grass, it just, it's one of those things, is I wish the dogs weren't on the grass, for normal dog reasons. But those are the only two things that I wish that we would do better, because I think it would improve the experience for Grand Island people. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Nickerson.
I'd just like to echo what they've said. Brent, I don't, I know you'll probably disagree with this, but when I'm down there on one of those Friday nights, I don't think there's anybody that works harder than you. You'll probably say, "No, there's other people." No, I mean, you are giving it 100% nonstop, and that tells us a lot about your heart and soul for this, and I appreciate that very much, because that's what makes things successful. And you were an advocate for downtown Grand Island before it was a cool thing to do, and that's one thing I'll never forget. And so this is just another way to support that. Now, I'm surprised, I don't know where I've been for the last nine years, but I never realized that this was part of LB-840 every year. I don't know where that went, so I was a little surprised when I looked at this tonight and said, "Really? They've been given money?" Or, "They're asking for money?" That's just something, who knows where I've been? I didn't know that. But I'm in full support of it. Sometimes we've got to modify things due to Mother Nature, due to reality, but it is another gem of Grand Island that many communities only wish they could do. And you enhance that with the festoon lighting, and you've got the lighting there on the Amor Plaza's stage, and the upgrades that happen every year to make that better for the bands. It's just a wonderful thing for Grand Island. So I'm supporting it tonight, obviously, and just want to, again, thank you, not just to you, but everybody that makes this successful. But again, you were supporting downtown before it was cool. Now look where we're at.
Mr. O'Neil.
Just a couple of comments and a question or two. I've always been very appreciative of the event. It's amazing how many people it draws downtown. I know it takes a lot of effort to do that. One question I just had too is, do you feel that there's still enough volunteers to help keep this going, or?
Yeah, there are, and this continued partnership and bigger partnership with these people here just extends beyond that, because I'm just one guy out there trying to raise funds, do this, do that, and have such great minds and commitment. So I'm not worried about that at all, and we've got people that are, you know, ringing up and talking and trying to modify this, grow, and keep this thing rolling, so.
And just so we understand, a couple of the challenges too, whether it's, I know, I think last year had a lot of weather issues as well, but...
First three out of four.
Yeah, I remember, that's pretty rough. And even in those, there's still, the expenses, you still have to pay a significant chunk of this credit.
There are bands and insurance and things like that, and yeah, it does, it doesn't stop, unfortunately, so, but it's rock and roll.
I just want to confirm, hopefully you get a lot better weather this year as well.
Well, and this partnership with Leader Crans too, which, which is, I think it was a great gem for rail side also, and watching, you know, they're trying to grow too and improve that, and I know we've had discussions for, for next year to do a show at the Leader Crans with multiple bands and really highlight Here Grand Island, Leader Crans, because we feel like a lot of different things in our rail side area that, that just, just builds a better rail side.
So they'll, they'll be the backup if it does rain to be an indoor event, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then just curious too, in, in the business community, is there some more renewed support as well with other sponsorships and stuff too this year?
Yes, and it's nice that I'm not the only one out there kind of beating the drum, because I, I think it's an easy, easy sell to people. The marketing, we have a great following, and the people that know that more than I do, and they've taken over a lot of this to take some off of my plate so I can concentrate on some other aspects of the festival, has been outstanding, so. I think it's, it's an easy sell, especially if you, I mean, you've got marketing dollars and where you look at, where you place these, I think you get a really big bang for your, for your buck when you, when you utilize Here Grand Island in that respect, so.
I wish you luck, and I know the Green Team's been working hard out there. I see them every day working on it, so, good luck on Friday.
All right, see you Friday morning, and Friday. Oh, any other questions?
Mr. Nickerson.
Talked about the Leader Crans. I'm kind of interested, if there is inclement weather, is this just going to be like a standing room type thing? You just go in there and stand? Because that Leader Crans is not that huge of a place, so how do you envision the crowd getting in there?
It'll obviously be different. I mean, it's a lot easier to, to make this work with 3,000 or 4,000 people, so, but with this, this partnership, then we just shift, we shift it over there, expenses are covered, and then Leader Crans has a chance to make some money and keep that going. We do have an agreement with them that if, you know, it's a successful evening, that they will contribute back to Here, Here Grand Island.
Just curious how many people could actually go in there? You're not going to be able to put seats down, I can't imagine, so it'd just be standing? And if there's a capacity issue...
Talked about putting seats around the, the edges and some tables. I think they're capped at around 670, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, in inclement weather, a lot of people aren't going to be there anyway, so it would probably accommodate that. So that's, that's great, just thought I'd ask. The other thing, there's just one disappointment through this whole thing, is that for all these years, you've never asked Jack, Mark, or I to bring our band up there, and we've just, you know, we should, we should have a chance sometime too, so that's just my disappointment.
Next year, we'll get on the submission page.
Okay, there, very good, thank you.
You can come down here and play for city council.
Okay.
And if they don't throw you off the stage, then you're in. Build it, and they will come.
Motion adopted.
Excellent meeting, thank you, counsel.